Are we live? Okay, all right. Okay. All right, well, welcome. I want to call to order the Board of Supervisors of Elections. It's Thursday, August 21st, 2025 at 7:02 PM. For roll call, I'm Eileen Leahy, Chair. Debbie Atzik.
Here.
Liam Mercer.
Present.
Regina Watkins Eldridge. And Teresa Bucalo.
Here.
Ashley Leonard's unable to attend this evening. There's no comments have been submitted, so we'll just move on to approval of minutes. So there were two sets of minutes. We'll do April, uh, April, August 12th, 2025. Any chance to look at them?
I had no comments.
No comments.
Okay. Motion to make them.
I move that we accept the minutes of August 12th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. How about the ones for August 18th?
I had no comments on those there.
No comments.
Okay, a motion?
Move to accept the August 18 minutes.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moved. All right. Do this at the end. So what I, I was able to do them all, all the campaign fund reports.
Thank you.
It was almost 30. We were expecting 34. And we did not receive one from Alderman Gay, candidate Genevieve Torrey, or candidate Jack Appellianti. So after tonight's meeting, they'll receive notification that they're late and that they'll be assessed late charges.
Could you remind me what the late charges are, just for clarity?
Twenty dollars a day for a maximum of 500 due to election.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Now, what's going to be different this year is we are now going to be, there's a penalty if your amended reports are late. So amended reports are due 15 days from when the notice is given that you need an amended report. In the past, we haven't assessed penalties, but that was a code change this year, in large part just to make sure that people do it, especially in an election year. It's, it's important because if there's an issue with the first report and it's not amended, the second report's going to be wrong or there's going to be issues. So it's really not meant to so much be punitive, but maybe encouraging people to get, to get those in.
So is the 15 days would be to have a final approved report or they have 15 days to submit a second edition? So the second edition, then, from that point, it'd have another 15 days after we look at it?
So they would submit an amended report, we review it, and then if there needs to be another amended report, they would get 15 days after. But we've been pretty specific. So there's always a few that maybe have to do a second amended, but for the most part.
That's uncommon, okay, thank you.
And that's, you know, that's why going through them so thoroughly so that you're not saying, oops, we didn't see that the first go around, see if the second go around. So that's going to be new for the penalties. And so we have those three. We had one late. I think that was it. I was really happy that, I don't know if this is a most accurate count, but it looked like there were 10 submitted with the old format and 25 with the new. So I was pretty happy with that. And having reviewed them, the new form is much easier because, because it's fillable, we're not getting handwritten stuff as much. And that makes a big difference in terms of reviewing it. So what I thought we could do is, rather than kind of just split them, maybe, because I've gone through them, and most, many of them are fine. You know, it's little stuff that we could just, I could just show them and then you can flip through them and try it that way. Let's see if that works, okay? There's a couple that I already know will need amended. The first one is Ross Arnett's. His was a day late. He has not paid his fee yet, so he'll be assessed the fee at $20 for the one day. I think it was one day. Was it two days? One day. And his, he has as a cash balance of zero, but his last, his last campaign report from last year did have the money in it. So we have to take care of that.
So it would have to show it got paid to something if.
Right, like your cash balance that you start this time has to match what your cash balance was the last time.
Okay.
So there's nothing really to review because he has.
Is his treasurer the same person or new?
I don't know. Can't read what the signature is.
Because he's been here forever and should know all this. I didn't bring last, I didn't bring our, the finance reports from July, you know, from.
I checked all of them. I checked all the cash balances on them.
To know how much he should have left.
It's not very much.
Okay.
So then the second one is Friends of Fred Payone. There's some numerous deficiencies that we'll need to go back to them. Address names and addresses. There's names, but there's no addresses. There's no codes. There's a number of issues with this, so.
They should know too.
Send them back.
These are longtime people.
We did have also the submission of someone who, right. So we, we did receive one from Friends of Tom Sells, but he withdrew before we even approved him. So thank you for going through it. And basically, he just had a loan himself. So those are the ones off the top. And then in terms of incumbents, those were pretty simple. So Sheila Finlayson has, her total cash available is, the math was just $1 off. So that needs to have a summary sheet. And there is one, one expenditure that I'm going to ask you all to get your opinion on. There's an expenditure for community donation to Ronaldo Brown's Back to School Giveaway Event for students. And there's also one at the Legacy Center that's put down as a community event ticket. And I'm questioning them because we've had this discussion before. What is an expense for a campaign versus an expense for the community that's an incumbent? And so I kind of wanted your opinion on this because she is an incumbent.
Is this a final report or just her regular, just the regular report?
It's not a final report. So she's keeping her report open.
Yeah, the question we've, we've had is, is it in the line of duty? Or is it personal Community donation for back to school? And a community event? So if you were give, if you were giving, if you were donating to a candidate, what would you as a donor expect for them to use it for? That's how I like to break it down, is you're donating to a candidate for them to win, right? For them to serve your goals.
Right.
Well, may I look at the report?
Great.
To, to me, I feel like, I don't know what this community event is, but a community event could be a public appearance that could be campaign-related. The donation to a back to school giveaway is honorable as that might be. I'm not sure if that's campaign-related.
Okay.
What, what do you think?
I think what, what I'd like to do is send it back to Alderman Finlayson and ask for just further explanation. I don't know, is wait, they still in for, right. I mean, okay. Right. However, again, the question is, is it a campaign expense or is it an expense that an incumbent, that she as an alderwoman is, is involved in? And we've had, we've had this discussion before. And when, in the past, what we've done is to ask for additional information. So, I mean, this could have also taken place or been done before she decided not to run. So it may have been that. I mean, I'm, I'm willing to ask for more information. Anybody else or do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, we were trying to explain it clearly, but there's a lot of, you know, it's hard to find every situation. But we did embellish the description of that in the latest.
All right, well, if you all are comfortable with that, I'll just have them change their summary sheet. The rest of it's pretty straightforward. Did you want to look at it any more than that?
Sure. But we can keep moving on with the conversation.
An amended, she needs an amended summary, which I'll write up. An amended summary sheet. Okay, an amended summary sheet and additional. Well, in the past, we haven't made them submit every single page, but we could put amended reports, it's fine. Right. But then what happens is, we ask for an amended report and we get one page back. And then, so if we don't, if we only need one, let's do amended report for this, but there's going to be others that, if it's a math error on their summary sheet and everything's okay, I think we should be able to do it somewhere. Okay. Next one is Friends of Gavin Buckley. Another math error. Math was never my good subject. So the summary sheet needs to be amended. Everything in it, the numbers in the report are fine, but it's, the summary sheet is, it's wrong. One of the things that a lot of people didn't do, which I'm going to just put as an overall thing, would be putting totals at the end of the Excel spreadsheets, because it makes checking the math more difficult. All right, the next one is Friends of Rock Taves. His is fine. There were no issues with his. Next one's the Annapolis Republican Central Committee. There were no issues with that. And the Annapolis Democratic Central Committee, there were no issues.
You have them in order.
Right. Moving on. So for mayor candidates. Some people put all the instructions at the front, which they don't need. All right, so. Had no issues. What I've got here is all the math is okay. This was one of the new forms, and you can see everything gets filled in right away, which makes it so much easier. All right. The next one. The next one is Alderwoman Pindell Charles, who's a mayoral candidate. There were some transaction dates that the headers that were just inconsistent, which is not a big, a big deal. They can just easily be corrected. On Schedule 1, there's an aggregate that doesn't add up. Again, it's an aggregate that. And I, I can look through to see, it should be instead of 2595, it should be 2500. So it's donations from a spouse. So that's just a question mark to make sure, to ask where they came up with that one number, because it doesn't, it doesn't add up here. There's also, yeah, we, you don't both have to see them, but that's the second one, but you can. There's also some inconsistencies in terms of a number of the loans. So there's a couple of loans that are on the loan page, and then there's some other loans that are on the outstanding obligations, and they need to be in one place. So I'm going to ask them to, my recommendation is to amend the report, to have the loans in the correct place, and to also check the, the aggregate. And then there's a couple of zeros or Os, meaning other on dispersments, that don't have explanations. Give you all a chance to catch up.
Where is, where is, there it's.
We haven't gotten there yet.
Oh. How about Rhonda's?
Right here. Look at this one. F on this one works here, but not if you put the loans. Some of this total outstanding would be up here. And this is the old, the old form with your Excel spreadsheet. All right. Friends of Jared Littman. We just asked, he also, headings on some of the Excel spreadsheets, which we've asked for in the past with various candidates to make sure the headings are there, so we know if they're dispersments There was one, when I go back to the in-kind donations. One of the in-kind donations is a food, is a donor who gave a contribution of food, probably for a meet and greet or something. But what's listed here for the aggregate is 2,250. And that's over the limit. So we'll have to let him know that, so they'll need, oh, no, 200. I'm sorry, 225? I looked at it first and thought it was 2,500, so it's good. Now, the in-kind, there's another one from a donor that has here that the, oh, that works out too. All right, never mind. So he did account for it. There was two things, what, this was a donor that had made a cash contribution and then also did an in-kind, so it did work out. I thought the, the cash was in addition to this, but it looks like it's included, so they're good. They're both under the 2,500. So other than headers, that's the only, that was the only issue I saw. He's okay. I think if you all are in agreement, as far as things like headings and totals at the bottom, I think we just remind everybody in general to please do it.
It's fine with me.
All right, next one is Benjamin Bramson, which is perfect because they're all zeros.
I figured some would be.
So then the next one is Friends of Katie McDermott. Good with this one.
I saw what you were talking about with it not being listed on the outstanding loan.
Friends of Katie. McDermott, again, some, asking just to include some things on the headers. I think for her, it was transaction periods. The totals on page one of Schedule 1. Maybe sure I wrote it right. I think I did this one late last night. I'm just trying to. This was contributions. Okay, it did come. Okay. That one did end up coming out okay. And on Schedule 5 for McDermott, which is in-kind contributions, there's no aggregate amount listed. But that's kind of a gray area, because if it's a first, I mean, technically, if someone's given 769, you put that's the aggregate as of now. So technically, you could say we could see it, but there's nothing saying you have to put it there. I mean, we don't really talk about the aggregate as much, so I think it's really up to us. Do we?
You're saying because it's the first report? Or you're saying in general, we don't care about the column?
We do care about the column, but I think what happens sometimes when it's a first report like this, you don't, you think, okay, well, that's their first. I think what comes to mind in aggregate is if there's more than one payment. So there's not another payment, so there's nothing really to aggregate. Does that make sense?
It does.
So we could certainly ask her to fill that in, or we could just say, moving forward, just remember to do your aggregate.
Yes.
Are you all okay with just, just saying that?
So she was using the old form? Oh, she just left it blank.
She just left it blank.
Which could be zeros.
Right. Or I mean. No, it would be whatever that is.
It would be the same amount.
And that's what usually happens on these spreadsheets.
Right, yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay. That's McDermott. Yes, she'll be reminded of.
It's the only time it could be blank. It would be filled.
Right, right. So she, that'll be kind of the umbrella to your transactions. Again, headings, just needed to include the campaign and the transaction period. And to put totals, then, this is, you know, I'm willing to let it pass if you all are. Ideally, on all of these spreadsheets, there should be totals, which makes it easier for us.
It does have columns.
Yeah. It's just that, and there are others that have done it. I mean, you have to, the totals are fine.
No, we need columns and.
Yeah. And then I'm trying to think if there was. Yeah, he hit his answer really well, which is, yeah, he did all the math, so.
I have a question on this report from Littman. I was just glancing at dates and whatnot. And here's an expense for an annual holiday bizarre. that is like similar to the question we had for Alderman Finlayson is, is a, is a donation to a candidate running for election, can that donation be used? Let us for a sponsor at an annual holiday bizarre.
To me, there's a difference, if you're a nun, I mean, I mean.
Versus a ticket, a sponsor is.
Well, you can do a ticket, you can do a sponsor. To me, the difference is there's an incumbent who's not running and is donating to a community event. And again, we're just going to ask for more information. No. I mean, the question has come up in the past when we've asked campaign versus part, being part of an alderman. So all of these people have, I shouldn't say all, many of these candidates have bought tickets to it. I mean, if you want to start looking at all of those and highlighting them, we could be here all night.
I mean, you expect the candidate to be out and, and I think a sponsor is okay versus for, for a campaign activity, which that was.
Right.
I saw that he was attending and we had. So you're saying a person running versus not running?
That's what I just raised it. If you want to go back and discuss that one more, my question was, and I think what we decided was we were going to ask for some additional information about it. Any comments on that or?
Where is, I did not bring my description for how, what, we amended the description to try to be more clear about what expenses can be.
We didn't get into specifics. We just increased some of the codes. Here are the codes. This is for expenditures, so fundraising. Well, if we're going to go through it to this detail, if you want to question tickets and community events, then that, we need to go back over and do it for all of them.
Sure. Well, the, this, the sooner we, we'd be clear, since this is the first one.
No, it's not the first one. They all have, I shouldn't say all, many of them have tickets and sponsors. That's part of running for office.
Right, right, right. But I mean, the first report that's coming in, if, if, it's better to catch anything now than.
Right. Well, this is, this is Mr. Littman's second report because he's been running longer. These are the codes and this is what we've given. We don't have in our code super specifics. You can't use it for personal items, can't do it for rent, but if we do not go, we've had the discussion.
You can't use it for rent.
I'm sorry, for rent, right, for personal rent. We have had discussions in the past, if we wanted to go more specific, the state, for instance, uses it, is a little stricter about it, but they do allow tickets and they do allow sponsorships.
Yeah, what, see definitions, what's the definition?
Of fundraising.
Yeah.
Well, we'd have to, have to look.
That's what I was trying to find. Are we going to get copies of these?
I mean, I guess you can, but we're making these decisions tonight. I mean, you can't be taking them.
Right, but we're just looking at them now, real time.
Right, they'll be posted.
They'll be posted online tomorrow.
So these have all been reviewed using the guidelines that we've had. This is your chance to look at them a second time, so we can get a second review. My, my question is, if you are questioning tickets and sponsorships and you're questioning it on this one candidate, then we need to go back and do it for all of them.
Right, right, yeah. No, definitely all of them.
And it hasn't been something in the past, to my recollection, that we have questioned.
Yeah. No, definitely it has to be the same. This candidate has more to look at than the others. And we're just, I'm just seeing it.
We have not questioned that in the past, to my recollection.
But I know we spent time on this, trying to get it pretty black and white when there's a lot of gray, because there's so many different ways you can spend money. So I'm just trying to make sure we don't start taking something on one report and not another if we, since this is the first time to catch things. And there's a lot here, just because it's an active candidate.
Did best due diligence I could do. But the things that you're questioning are things that we have accepted readily in the past and so.
Yeah, and I'm not, and I don't mean sponsorships or tickets. That one was more an event that I didn't see sponsors for, but then there are some things that, you know, I'm just, I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around what, what we're taking or not.
Debbie, I think we're delving into, if you're going to go to this degree on all of them, we're going to need to do them for everybody.
Of course, yeah. No, I would have liked to have had them beforehand and then I could have looked at them as well.
We just got it. You were welcome to.
Yep. No, I couldn't because we're not supposed to meet.
Okay, well, if you, I mean, are you saying you want to review all of them? Because then what we can do is, I'll give you my notes and hand these to you and you can do a second review on all of them and we'll meet another time.
I mean, I think we all should review all of them, but, and I'm not saying that you didn't catch anything, but that's why there's three of us is to have eyes.
Well, there's 30, 34 of these to be done and we're looking at math, we're looking at specifics. So again, if we're going to continue down of looking at each one and you want to do that, then we'll just do it for everybody.
I mean, most of them are, are much simpler than this. This, you know, this had hundreds because it's been a year, a year of active fundraising. So the others are much simpler. But in the interest of time moving forward.
I think for the next, the next time we review this, we can each come in and look at them before our meeting, so we each can have as much time with them as we want. And then we can all review them together.
Okay, but there'll be a time limit in terms of when these can get done. So if they come in, they need to be reviewed probably within 48 hours to get it all out.
Yeah, no, we've done it before and, yeah.
Okay. I understand you're not questioning mine, but for efficiency and to make sure that we're looking at it, I think that to have three eyes look at it is a lot to ask all of us to be doing. So, do you want to do that for these reports now, or are we talking about just the next ones?
The next ones.
Okay, so I'm just hoping, hearing from both of you, just making sure that you're going to have the commitment to come in and review 34 within a, within a few hours, I mean, within a couple of days after we get them.
Yeah, so, I mean, they'll just be available. It doesn't mean that you have, that we all have to look at them, but I think, I mean, this is just our first time doing this as this group of three, and so I think probably it's possible we didn't realize how, you know, dense they would be. So now moving forward, well, I mean, they were sitting here, they came in on Monday, Tuesday, Tuesday, and we're meeting today on Thursday, so, you know, we'll, what, we all know, will know the day where we're meeting and we'll know when they'll all come in and we can, you know, if you want to look at them ahead of time, we'll comment, you can comment and they'll be available.
I'd like to find out, are we going to all look at them? Or how are we going to, how do you all want to do this moving forward? Because if you want to, if everybody wants to look at them, we can't be sitting here. I mean, this took me literally probably six or seven hours.
Yes, no, I was saying.
So if you want to look at them, that's great, but.
I was saying, we each would have the opportunity to come and look at them.
But I, I thought we did look at them.
Which you could have this time.
Which we could have and, and we didn't, and that's, that's okay.
But now we're getting held up because the opportunity wasn't taken and now you want to take it.
No, so my recollection, this is my fourth year on the board. It's my first time doing a brand new batch, but it took hours in the past for Keanu and you and myself to go over reports. There's, there were reports due at different times for different reasons and we all looked at them. It all took time, there were time constraints and we all found some things. And sometimes one found something and someone else didn't. So it's just, it's just not only being involved, but helping each other out. So my recollection is that we did all do them and we all did them timely. And my concern when we met Monday morning was, would I have enough time to be ready for tonight? So I asked, when will we get them? Because I know it's, this amount was going to take hours and you offered to look at them and, and I was, you know, we said something about me too, and then we were told that two of us can't meet because that's a meeting, so, so you took it on. And then I thought they were going to be sent out. I thought we were going to get them online. My, my, what I understood was that the next day they would be in and we would get them online.
Let's talk about what we want to do in the future. So these come in, they're available here in City Hall to come in and to look at. I'm a little uncomfortable for the board members.
Yes, yep, for the board members.
So I'm a little, right, so I'm a little uncomfortable sending all of these out email wise, so.
Right.
If you want to come in and look at them before the meeting, you can come in and we can leave the comments that we have and I'm, I'm fine with that. But we're going to need to be really pretty strict about getting in here and looking at them, because to try to do them in a meeting, it's very difficult, especially if you want to go to the degree that you want to go through. So my thought had been by doing the first review, I could pick up a lot of the things. So I'm not against anybody looking at them, but I, again, we're on a time schedule to get this information back after the candidate so that they can be cleared ultimately so voters can see it. So what, do you want to just split these up now, or do you want to just keep moving as we've been doing?
Let's, let's keep, I would say let's keep moving as we, as we're going through and I appreciate you explaining what you've identified and then we can maybe look at them each. If, if either of us wants to look at them, we can wait until that one's done being looked at by all of us and then we'll move on to the next.
Okay, well, if anybody, if you want to look at them again after today, then we need to hold off on sending out.
Don't want to look at them again after today.
But I appreciate hearing your, your input.
Are you going to want to look at them again before we send out the reports?
If I do, it'll be tonight. It'll be, it'll, it won't be tomorrow, it'll be tonight.
Okay, all right.
Wait, but you're, but we're not getting them digitally tonight. I mean, it would just, you'd be staying here.
We're staying here now.
Okay.
But we have to do it within the meeting because if you have something you want to recommend that needs to be done, we have to do it now.
All right. I say we keep, keep moving.
Yeah, the only, yeah, it's only, most of them are going to be easy.
Not necessarily, but that's okay.
All right, well, then keep going. We'll see.
So are you, are you, do you want to look at Friends of Jared Littman more?
Maybe, but let's keep going and see what, what lies ahead.
Well, let's finish this one before we keep moving. So if your question is about tickets and events, I think we need to make that determination for everybody.
Of course. Because I remember we went over this so much in the past and we need to catch it, be as
Okay, the definition of fundraising is it pertains to political fundraising. That's what's in the code. And if you look at their election practices, it, it does not fall under prohibited. So prohibited practices are giving a promise to any person or any money gift advantage for the vote, directly or indirectly receiving, accepting, requesting or soliciting from any person any money gift advantage for your vote. I mean, this just has, this is just talking about things that you can, you know, you're basically saying, I give you this and you're going to work for me, you're going to vote for me. There's nothing in code, you know, we've, we've talked about being specific, but we've also recognized that sometimes if you're too specific, that ends up being a challenge too, so.
So this is, here's one sponsoring the Perrin Mitchell Memorial. You know, that's a permanent, it's a, it's not an event, it's a, it's a thing, it's a permanent beautiful structure and it was just recently built and opened. And this is a sponsorship of something built. A lot of sponsorships here. Some are events, some are lasting things. Again, we're trying to think, what is, you know, what is appropriate for donations for a candidate running for office that is.
Debbie, it's, it's not what's appropriate, it's what our city code allows.
Exactly. That's what we're trying to get, but if it's open to interpretation, then that's before us.
There's nothing saying they can't do it, so.
Then anything, then really, then almost anything, it's a wide, the wide.
It's been that way, yes, for all of the candidates and so.
Of course, I'm talking about all of them. I'm talking in generalities. This is the only one that has information.
I can't help but ask, this, this particular candidate seems to be getting a little bit more scrutiny.
No, only because there's stuff to look at.
Okay, well, there's lots of stuff to look at, so if you want to start looking at all the rest of them, but we'll be here.
No, well, I mean, what I've looked at so far hasn't had, I've looked at every one so far and it hasn't had nearly these.
What do you want to do? Do you want to?
This is a year's worth, this is pages of things.
Do you want to ask for more information? Do we just, I would like to move on.
And there's a lot of different things in here, that's fine.
Well, do you want to go through it and then ask for more information?
No, because you want to move on, that's fine. Let's move on.
We can do something, if there's an action you want to take, if you give me an action that we can say we're going to do, other than just sit here and talk about, is it okay or not? I mean, if you have a proposal.
No, I need to, I need to look at this, but I'll look at it when it comes out tomorrow.
But you can't ask any more questions if we're going to be voting on this.
I won't ask anymore tonight.
And I would ask that you have to look at everybody's then.
I've, I've looked at everybody so far. This is the one that had stuff in it to, that I had questions about. I've looked at every single one of these, I hope. I, I thought I was getting, I, I think I've looked at every one so far and I want to look at every one.
All right, going to move on to.
Yeah, I looked at these, I've looked at those.
I have nothing checked out for me. I don't know if you want to take a look at it, other than making headings on all of the spreadsheets.
This report's okay.
Right.
Okay. Tom Creek, who is running for alderman in Ward One, summary sheet, as you'll see here. Summary sheet, as you'll see here. It's inconsistent. It says here that the cash balance is from, that there's a cash balance, which I don't understand because this is his first report and I think it's just on the wrong line. I think it's supposed to be a contribution, but there's no contribution. So I'm not sure where the 500 came. And then there's nothing for loans, but he still says there's 500 cash available. So either 500 wasn't put into Schedule 1.
I think we need to request an amended report.
Right. So, and also there appears to be outstanding obligations because he has no, even with 500, he has spent his expenditures of 1,410 and 24 cents, which would be an outstanding obligation or also report. So he needs to redo a report.
Yeah.
And we'll identify those specific things for him. Friends of Terry Huntley. Again, totals at the spreadsheets would be helpful.
So quickly on that point, you're saying that you want a total on, because this is the same spreadsheet as this.
Right, but you can still subtotal it.
You want to subtotal?
Right, and some of the, some of the candidates have done that.
Okay.
Because, I mean, we certainly could go through all of this.
Alright, no, I understand.
Subtotals and then looking at aggregates and trying to just spot check.
I understand.
Yeah, so that, that's for just mostly for the math. One other question I had is there is someone on salary, which is certainly permissible. I guess my question is, do you all want to, I was just curious as to what the position was. But we could just leave it as a salary or just ask.
I was watching it. We've, we've agreed on that needs. Can I take a quick look at it? And do you know what page the salary's on?
It's a, it's a recurring one. I think my highlighter died. Think I did it like here. Yeah, and there, yeah, it's the same person. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so I've got it marked a couple of places.
Can I take a look?
So what was your question about salary?
Do we want a description of it? It says salary, which is allowed.
Right. Because, yeah, Jared has had payments in his too.
In the code, is there any specifics about what kind of salaries you can pay? Because otherwise salary is a salary.
Salary.
Then I don't have any issue with it.
Yeah, I assume it's for the campaign.
Alright, so.
I think they're certifying that it's related to the campaign and you can't.
Right, so that is just fine. Friends of Karma. We have a math, a math issue. And there's one aggregate that didn't come out. So, show you this. So this is off by a penny, which we could probably skip, except there's some other issues. So when I look at expenditures and transfers, I get a different number. It's only off again by like 30 cents, but it makes everything.
The 30 cents carries, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And this is also something small, but there's also an aggregate here that she has, she's had another $50 and a $20 contribution.
So the aggregate's wrong.
So the aggregate's wrong. It should be 120, but that can easily be fixed. Again, these are just math.
Okay, I think we should ask for an amended report. That sounds good. Let's, Debbie, do you want to look at this one?
Sure, I'm looking at all of them.
Alright, this one is Kenneth Vincent.
Let's, let's just let her get it.
See, these are much more straightforward than, than a lot of the gray ones. These are black and white.
Amendment report for O'Neil. Kenneth Vincent, who is running for alderman in Ward 2. He, um, his math was pretty simple. However, he did not complete all of the, all of the pages. They're supposed to at least.
Fill them in.
Fill them in. Or at least initial them. I don't know if you have to do an amended report for that or we'll just ask that the following report would be.
I, I think we should ask for an amended report. It's just consistency. If it's not right, amended report.
Great, it's just filling in the, filling in the top part.
And initialing, I believe.
Well, many people, many people do not initial. Many people do not slash an initial. So technically we were requiring a slash and an initial. And we started not requiring that in the past because it happens so often. But the top part needs to be filled out.
Understood.
But I don't know if, they need to know going forward that it needs to be filled out. Amending it will make them do that or just telling them would be enough too. But.
Amended report.
Yeah, it needs more than just stapling it on.
This, this one you didn't have any issues with?
Didn't have any issues with this one.
This is for.
This one's for, um, Candace Smith Brown running in Gray. Look at this one if you want.
Seems like maybe he has reviewed these before.
I'm sorry, what were you saying?
I don't know if you've announced that yet, but I have that same. Has anyone else claimed?
No, I haven't asked this one yet.
Thank you. Can Debbie look at that?
I had, trying to remember if I double check this. This is looking at Deborah J. Odom, who's running as Alderwoman in Ward 3. I seem to recall that you cannot use campaign funds for a filing fee. Do you recall that? I've not seen it before, but this, that's one of the entries on here is a reimbursement to the candidate for the candidate filing fee.
It's the only one we've seen so far.
Yeah, I've not seen one before.
I vaguely remember that being allowed either, but I don't know that.
Me too, I thought I saw a certain.
I don't know if it's on the candidate. I think it might be on the certificate of candidacy. Need to look that up. We'll wait on that one. Alright, so for this one, questioning if a certificate of, if a filing fee can be taken from campaign funds. And then on.
Join us, join us at this to the side and we can take a quick look. And, and keep moving through the rest of them.
Alright, the next one. The next one is Friends of Mike Dai, and there were no issues with it. We both. Okay. Oh, the next one. Yes. Go ahead. Want me to wait?
No, I'm, no, we'll keep going. If you both looked at that, then my opinion doesn't really matter.
Alright, so the next one is Janice Alsop Johnson. So I had one question for Regina. It appears, it appears that she doesn't have a campaign account, but she's using her personal. Does she? Well, there's something here saying she's writing this letter to mention that all money's paid as applying for the alderwoman position was paid with my own savings in our checking account at the United Bank or gave the balance. So I wanted to clarify.
Is that, is that a, that could be the certificate fee? Is that what she's talking about?
I wasn't clear. It could be that she's reimbursing herself for something. I, I didn't quite understand it. So I think we just need to ask her. Plus, this needs to be redacted when it gets scanned. Her, her personal account numbers are on here. I don't know if they're personal, but the account numbers are on here.
I don't even have. Who's that? Alsop Johnson?
This is Alsop Johnson.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have her certificate of candidacy, so I don't know if we, we had that.
So she needs an amended report because also, um, the, the math is wrong. The Schedule 1 is listed as 835, but it's 1,015. She's included all of her receipts, which is actually very helpful, but not necessary. So it's just questioning about a personal account. There are some O codes that have not been explained that need to be added for Schedules 1 and 2. The math is incorrect on Schedule 1 and Summary Sheet. There's also an entry for donations for a cash donation box. And I don't think we've had that before. Have you had that before in the past? It was probably just an event or a meet and greet and people just, but you're supposed to.
But then we can't, we can't track who.
Who gave, right, right. That's a no-no.
I guess that's a question with Ashley as far as how to handle it. Any thoughts, Regina? Alright, we can check with Ashley for that. And when you do the math for the summary sheet, it's negative, there's a negative number for the cash balance. So that needs to be put underneath outstanding obligation. So, and then if this is a first time candidate, so again, probably just some assistance with filling this out. So that needs an amended report.
So is one of the questions going to be, do you have your own?
Is what, the accounts that are listed, are they personal accounts or are they campaign accounts?
Right, because she would need a campaign account.
Right. And maybe she means something. I just wasn't clear in terms of what she was saying there. And again, I just want to make sure that those numbers are redacted on the.
Well, it says, oh, it has these two banks here.
So anonymous contributions, reading from the, reading from the code here. "Any money or other thing of value received from an unknown person or source by any treasurer or other persons or committee authorized to incur obligations or to pay, or to pay or defray obligations or expenses under the provisions of this chapter shall not be used for any political purposes whatsoever, but shall be paid by the treasurer or other persons or committee receiving the money or thing through the city to help defray the expenses of the election."
Thank you for looking that up.
Pretty clear there. I found that before I found the other.
Always good to have the, the code on hand. Alright, well, that makes that easy. We'll make that recommendation.
I forgot.
So she has to turn that money into the city?
That's what it sounds like.
Cash donations.
You were looking for the filing fee.
So $190 would be coming to the, you all, lunch. I wanted to see if her, if the banks, if her bank matched up. Alright, Chase to Unite. Is this a new, did you make a new checklist?
I didn't use it on all of them because it was easier just to.
Yeah, but when, but this, this is not, yeah, because I brought the old one, but we've changed, but.
Right.
Yeah, I, you know, we, this is very helpful in the checklist. That was a thorough one. And here she listed United and Chase. Yeah, you got, we got everything here. How's that?
Okay, well, we. So we're good with that?
Except, yeah, it's going to be a big.
Um, Johnson, it's a men, amended report.
Did you mark the cash box?
It's right there. Okay, next one is, uh, do we do Deborah Odom? Oh, that's what we're waiting for, for the filing fee. Okay. So the next one is, if I say her name, Makel's, is it Makel or Mackel? Makel, Community Builders. The spreadsheets need a name and transaction period on them. The spreadsheets need a name and transaction period on them and totals at the bottom. On the list of items. There's one code that's blacked out that I can't, I can't read it. Maybe I can read it here. I think it says. I don't know what it says. And so there is a question here. There have been some.
Fundraising F.
I can't read with this stuff.
Fundraising.
Says fundraising, okay. So that has fundraising. So there are a number of items on this one that I think we may want to ask for some additional information. There are a number of meals. That are included, and there's also some would appear possibly to be personal items. That are included. So I can go through them.
Which one is this?
This is Ms. Makel. Yeah, there's a number of donor meetings, which is fundraising, which. We have allowed in the past one-on-one meetings for fundraising. I just wanted to bring them up because there's three. Three on this page. There's a number of about ten of them.
Is she paying for, for her meal or for their meal?
I don't know. And it also brings up the question, when we've had this in the past. One of the things that we did tell the candidate at the time, and maybe this is appropriate here. When you look at code, the treasurer is supposed to be paying bills. And so if the candidate pays a bill, they're supposed to submit a receipt to the treasurer to either have them pay it. Or to reimburse the candidate. So there are a number of expenses here that I guess I would ask. Did the candidate pay for them or did the treasurer? Because we did that, that was one of the things we did with the candidate with dining before. That he said. It, it's classified under fundraising and one could make the case that it's fundraising, but we did ask for some additional information. There are also some. Other types of. Personal things that we can either ask questions about or just not include. There are some. Professional campaign attire. There are some other meals that are included. Again. I mean, I'll let you look.
We've allowed. Campaign attire that has their name and office.
Their t-shirts and stuff.
So we've allowed a jacket, a hat. You know, a polo shirt. I mean, yeah, they buy t-shirts for staff, but they can have something nicer. But it has their office and their name. You know, it's campaign related. To just buy somebody, you know, a, a black blazer and a white blouse. You know, to buy them clothes that you can wear. You know, wherever and just are in your closet all the time. That we have, as, I mean, I.
If it's for the purpose of a campaign, I mean.
Closing someone to campaign, I.
If you, if you felt like you needed a professional. I could, I can understand how if you're campaigning, you suddenly might need more professional attire than you've ever needed in your life. And you might.
But then you get it, you get a polo, you get a, you get a fleece, you get a polo, you get a t-shirt. You get something that has your name on it for office? You know, yes, if they come to my door, if they're at an event, yes, have, have what you are campaigning for on your clothing. People have done that.
Alright, well, I think we just have to go through this and make some decisions, so.
Sure, let's go through it.
The donor meetings, there are several of them.
Like three?
There's one, two, three. And three. There's ten.
Are you proposing?
Any.
Gotcha. Are you proposing for the donor meetings, the request for information would be what was paid for at the donor meeting?
In the past, we've let donor meetings go. I think in this case, with all candidates, we need to remind them. That they are supposed to be, the way it works is they're can't, they're. They're not supposed to be paying for it. The treasurer is supposed to be paying for it. If they are in the position where they're paying for it, then they need to show it as a reimbursement.
Right, it's.
And so that's just the second count because you want the treasurer to be following. This. So, and it may have occurred that way, but again, we've kind of asked. Do you have the receipts and was this, did the treasurer get this?
So how many are there?
Information. There's eleven that I can see. There's some other fundraising dinners that are included. They're just fundraisers. There's a lot of fundraisers.
That's like twenty-four. Another.
There's one, there's a lot.
Yeah.
There's also some gas expenses. And some fast food meal expenses. And there's also a school of balance expense.
A what?
A what?
For school. Anna Rendell County Cashiers. For the school.
It just says for the school?
And there's this.
That, that to me is not, I mean, I would want to know more information about that. The, the, I think you're right about the gas and all of those things, and we want to confirm that they're being. If, if the candidate paid for it, then it needs to be reimbursed out of the treasurer's thing, and it should show up as a, show up that way.
Right. I mean, we historically have not necessarily paid for meals unless it was a dining, you know, unless it was meeting with somebody.
And that very well may be what it is, or maybe a meal during campaign activity.
Yeah, this is, this is, well.
These are listed as.
Know what the dates are.
It's listed as a field expense.
The, if you're, if in the midst of going around knocking on doors all, all day, as an example. You get lunch and that's reimbursed by the campaign. It doesn't say who, I mean, anybody that is part of that could be getting a meal. During the course of.
Are they the same dates or different dates?
How, how would that change?
Because, well, what they put down normally is if you're, if you're having a, a door knocking day. And you're gonna have a slew of volunteers and you're gonna give them, you know, pizza and drinks at one point. It, it's a one-line item. And it says, you know, lunch for volunteers.
Yes, I, that's one way to do it, but that doesn't necessarily mean that. Everyone campaigns in the same way. If you have, if you have one person campaigning. You know, each day, then you might.
That's what I'm asking for the dates, yeah.
There's seventeen. There's seventeen entries for meals. The majority of which I'm just scanning are.
Because the whole report is probably a month or a month, I don't know, a month or two.
I mean, Market House out back, that was a fundraiser. I think we just need to ask some additional information before saying yes. Would you agree?
I agree. I think particularly more information about the school.
Okay.
The school fee. And I, if you think the best way to go about it is, is asking for confirmation that it was reimbursed from the treasurer. Then that, that can be the way. What, what do you think is the best way to go about?
I think what we've done in the past is ask how it's related to the campaign.
Okay.
And was it paid by the candidate or was it paid by the treasurer?
Okay.
And in the case in the, that I'm thinking of in the past, it was paid by the candidate. We said, moving forward, you need to at least submit your, your receipt to the treasurer.
Yes.
So we could ask for receipts because they're supposed to keep all of them.
Yeah, I would, I would think that the receipt should be submitted to the treasurer.
Okay, so where receipts submitted.
And do we know if it's for just her or for whoever she's, for more people?
Okay. There's also some other person, what I would consider personal. Items here that I would, I would not include.
And which, which ones are those?
Those are the makeup and beauty products. And then there's one for eyebrow and skincare.
Yeah, no, if you run for office, you need to be somewhat prepared with time and abilities and. And what the public should support for you or not. I mean, these are people donating money. To lead the city in policies usually. It's, it's about. And to, to stretch, you know, I, I think it's a stretch to go for personal clothing.
Bringing up a good point. I mean.
Personal clothing and personal skincare.
Is that what, when people give money, they're giving for them to run for office, and I'm not really clear.
Yeah, I, I'm having a tough time rationalizing a makeup expense. Professional attire, I, I don't personally have a problem with. If you, the two of you have a problem with it, then it's two to one. I'm, or a four to three, so that's how it works. What, we said, sorry, when you said the makeup and beauty product.
Oh, it's on the other page.
No, you, you had them on.
There's makeup, makeup, and then eyebrow and skincare. Just multiple entries for professional campaign attire, and there's multiple entries for gas. That every few days, yes.
So the gas, to me, falls under the same, same category as.
But also. Does it matter where the gas is? I mean, you're campaigning in a small ward in a small city. The gas. I mean, you can almost walk through most of our wards. The, the gas every few days. I don't understand the, how. How you can use that much gas campaigning in our wards.
Okay, I, I, I hear you. I think we, that, sounds like we have a, a lot of issues. And are seeking more information on some of them, and some of them seem like. Non-election expenses. Just for my reference, if there's something that a candidate has listed as a non, a, non-campaign expense, then. What, what's the, what's the outcome we determine? It gets taken out of the report and the money has to be.
Has to be given back.
Given back to the campaign.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, I'm just looking at this and there's roughly two hundred dol, two hundred plus dollars that has been added for gas.
Okey-dokey. I think that falls in the same category as the meal.
Alright, so.
Because hypothetically, gas can be a campaign expense.
Right, I agree.
But.
Okay, but we have to.
But where is she go, I mean, that's not driving around your ward.
We're gonna ask for additional information. So, and that's what we've done before, is ask for an explanation. So we're gonna ask, just to review. We're, we're okay with the donor meeting. As far as fundraisers, but can ask for more information as far as how it was paid. We're gonna ask about the school, if that was campaign related. We're going to ask about the meals in terms of how were they used as a field expense. And we're going to ask about. Makeup, beauty, eyebrows, skincare, campaign attire, and the gas and food for more additional information in terms of how it.
So are, but are we asking for information or are we saying that some of those, because I would be of the opinion that the makeup and beauty is not. Campaign expense.
I'm, agree.
I agree.
Okay, so that needs to be taken out.
So we have to make a motion to not accept.
Okay, motion to not accept the. Expenses that we discussed, makeup, beauty, and.
Eyebrows.
Eyebrow and skincare.
Do you want a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But we're gonna ask for more information on the campaign.
Right, because I also would feel, I would go, I won't make a motion now if we're asking for. I guess if we want more information on the, on the attire, but. Lot of these are new and we've done, you've done this for decades. I've done state level and this level.
Right.
And we've never seen these before.
And it may be an educational thing too for the candidate because it is a first-time candidate, so.
Exactly.
Did we find anything about the filing fee?
I couldn't find anything. I think, I think we might need to ask. Ask Ashley, but. I mean, can we?
If there's nothing in the code, we can always say we're gonna just go by what the state does, and the state doesn't.
But I also don't know if I, like, find everything that's sitting here right now, so, but I.
Okay.
And no one else has claimed that. You would think if, if it. Was appropriated done, it would be done, but.
I'm trying to think.
I think most people would, most people would probably say that that happened before their campaign. That is the start of their campaign, so they aren't, well, I guess.
There's a summary guide to go through. So for guidance from the state. That helps for this and also for others. So a candidate. May pay expenses from a campaign from personal funds and seek a reimbursement. These aren't being, again, this is being asked, some of these things, are they being paid directly on a campaign check? Are they being paid and reimbursed? Anyway, I digress. I was looking to see if there was something in here about the filing fee. Alright, well, we can look that one up. So this is for Odom. We have a question that we still need to ask. So what do we, do we have to make a decision? Is it amended or?
Are there other, are there other issues?
No. There's only one thing that there's a code that's, or a method of how one payment was made. All the math comes out, okay. We can say it needs an amended report because they'll need to amend that.
Yep.
So amended report. Alright, Brooke Shandelmeyer. The math turns out to be okay. When doing these, you're supposed to put transfers in a separate column in his Excel spreadsheet. Does not do that. We've asked before. To use the, use our headings. So I would ask for the future that transfers be in a separate column. Unless we could make him, we could ask for it to be amended for this one also if you wanted. But that's one item. And then there's no totals at the bottom of each page, which we've had with a number of people. And then there's a number of PACs. That have made contributions. Which are allowed. But what we've done in the past is they need to be PACs that are registered and in good standing with the state. And. I think what we should do is. Ask the candidate to supply those, that information. That's what I did the last time. I checked it, but I don't think we should get into the habit of checking all of them. I think we should let that be known that it. That's what I did the last time. I checked it, but I don't think we should get into the habit of checking all of them. I think we should let that be known, that it, they have a PAC. He has about four PACs, so he's allowed to, he's allowed to accept money, a candidate's allowed to accept money from a PAC, but the PAC has to be in good standing and registered with Maryland. Our code says that they need to be approved by city, but we don't have a process to approve it, so what we've done in the past is gone to the state, and if they're registered and in good standing with the state, we accept them. So the question, I guess, is, are we going to look him up and look up and see if they're in good standing, or should we ask the candidate to do it?
There an easy way to look it up?
I didn't find it today. It, it's not very hard, but you have, I couldn't find it today when I was looking. So it doesn't necessarily mean that we can't accept the report.
Yeah, would the county have that information?
No, you can get it on Maryland. It's just a question, are we going to be doing that, or are we going to ask the candidates to do it?
Well, let's ask them to do it, and we have, we could do, but they need to know as well. The more we can educate the candidates, the better.
We've done it both ways in the past.
I think, um.
I, I would like to ask him to, to submit if they're in good standing.
Can I see that?
Yeah, which one is that, Brooke?
I mean, technically, he shouldn't be taking, any candidate shouldn't be taking money from a PAC unless they know it's registered and in good standing.
Very true.
Do you want me to go ahead and move on with some of them that are pretty cut dry?
Yes.
Right. Daisha Conti, who is running for alderperson in Ward Six, has a fairly simple return, but the totals are incorrect. I'm assuming that her schedules are correct. She has her contributions for, for Schedule One that are listed at 445, but on the summary sheet, it's listed at 370. So it needs to be amended to reflect the, the contributions. She has an outstanding obligation that's just on the wrong, the wrong line.
Okay, that sounds like we need an amended report.
So this Conti needs an amended report. The next one is Mr. Gallagher. Another simple one. Just one contribution, but he's done everything right as far as crossing out.
In terms of, uh, the Brooks is, uh, I, I don't know how to look that up, and I can't figure it out right now in the moment. It, it seems like something that we can do ourselves, but I don't know how to do it right now, so we need to ask for that additional information now. That's fine.
So.
I mean, they should prove.
Are you in agreement that they, we ask him to please submit? Because he's done it before in the past, has printed it out. He's done it.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to ask him, so it, it's an amended report. And are we accepting George Gallagher's?
I still need that one, and I need Brooks. Is that Brooks?
All right, moving on, and Mr. Casimano, I'm sorry if I got that wrong. Uh, his was fine.
So looking back, just to clarify, back on Karen's report that we're asking her questions on, um, some of these meals, these donor meetings.
I read it all through before.
I mean, but they're like out of.
All right, let's not get into judging, but we've agreed, we're going to ask the information for all of those things.
Out of, um.
Right, I don't want to be making judgments without getting the requested information.
They're far away, they're not local. Repeatedly.
All right, Friends of Rob Savage. So. And then Friends of Rob Savage, I have written down. The math on the summary sheet is okay. Lack of headings. And on Schedule Five, there is there's no actually doesn't need to do an aggregate. So on Schedule Five, and this is for Rob Savage, there's an address that's missing. And an aggregate that's missing. Other than that, there's also just that Schedule Five.
Okay, so it sounds like with this one, we're asking for amendments?
Yes.
Okay.
Who is that?
I haven't done that one yet. Okay, next one is Mr. Thorpe, who is running in Ward Eight. It's fine. It's totally perfect.
So I, I just want to note, like, there's meals on other things. That's why we.
Correct.
I, I'm not a meal, meals on the, the one, I think, I think, to me, I think we identified the particular expenses that were concerning. A meal is a pretty common thing to purchase, or to make him purchase at a
Right.
restaurant.
Right, but, but these meals, there was a lot of them, they were small amounts and they were not, they were listed as fundraisers, but not around here, so, um, they were just paying for themselves, it looks like, but it wasn't, and it was a fundraiser, and it was not, well, that's my only.
Well, that's why we're going to ask for additional information, which is what we've done before, which sometimes catches our eye a little bit more, or we have more questions because of.
Sure. Consistent, if meals, you're questioning meals on one group and not on the other group.
I agree.
Well, they were listed as fundraisers.
Okay.
So we have questions.
And I agree with that. What?
Of course.
Well, the question has, well, the question has become in the past the frequency of it, and that's usually, it's not so much the meals, but sometimes it's the frequency of it, but.
And where it is.
Where are you finding meal on this one?
But that's not, it's, we, we gotta be, we have to be consistent. A meal is, is a meal. I, I think there were other, there were other specific expenses that we identified, um, that we wanted more information about.
Yeah, I think we just, because it is a new candidate especially, we just want to catch and be clear.
I know, but we can't have, we can't have different treatment for new candidates versus non-new candidates.
Are we taking meals off then?
I mean, they're in Ocean City.
We're asking.
You know, there's three, three, three days in Ocean City, um, you know, it's a lot of fast food, it's a lot of, um, you know, it, we just need to be wise with how our, you know, um, I mean, like protecting the donor.
Debbie, Debbie, I understand, these, these reports.
I don't know, it's just integrity, I guess.
I, I understand what you mean, but these reports become public information and the public gets to make a judgment. If it's something that's, we can't determine as not being a campaign. Yeah, something related to the campaign. Ultimately, ultimately, it's the public's ability to judge that for themselves.
But the public doesn't necessarily know how to do that or have the time to do that. We're supervising these elections. So, I mean, I, I'm glad they're all running. But there's got to be, again, consistency, and, and if we do open it up like this, then, then we're opening it up a lot.
All right, well, so, okay, so let's deal with the, the meals situation.
I think we should strike the meals from asking for more information.
Otherwise, we go back and question all of them.
I would like, the, they're downlisted as a fundraiser. I would like to know how those meals relate to fundraising.
You're talking about the, the, the meetings.
I'm talking about the, they're called fundraisers.
So if, if we do that for one candidate, we're going to have to go back and do it for all of the candidates.
That's fine. I did not see anybody else do that, but that's fine.
Well, there are meals that are on other people.
Not listed as fundraisers.
Yeah, we are talking about two different things. There were, there were fundraisers, it's this line. There were fundraisers, the donor meetings.
Donor meetings were not as much an issue, because we've dealt with that in the past. It's the meals. It's the, it's the thing called meals, which is under as a field expense.
And, and I, I don't think that's what Debbie's saying.
Right, because they're, I don't mind, I don't mind a candidate getting a meal or volunteers getting a meal when they're on the trail, you know.
But we can't be nitpicking it.
Right, but this, well, this is, this was different. This had
Well, if I hear you, you're willing to just not, we're just going to accept meals.
Yes, the meals. I think the question, Debbie's question was about the donor meeting. Do you want to, what, what were you saying about the donor meeting? Because I think we had included that as asking for more information on the donor.
What we're asking, and we can also ask this of all of the candidates, is a reminder that treasurers are to be paying. I think the question is, who's paying for some of these?
Understood, okay.
Meals and the gas and the things like that. So it's not necessarily the purpose, but again, making sure that they're being handled appropriately, so.
Then, then it's a broad reminder to everybody.
It's a broad reminder to everybody. But if we are asking a particular candidate for specific information, are we going to ask this person for more information about their meals? And if so, are we going to go back and do that for everybody?
No, I, I don't want to ask for more information about meals.
Okay, so we're not going to ask for more information on meals. We are going to ask for the school fee.
Yes.
Okay, and we are going to ask, and I think we've already decided we are not accepting makeup, beauty, eyebrows, and skincare.
Yes.
What about the donor meetings?
The donor meetings are listed as a fundraiser, and they've been accepted in the past. So again, the point is, if we ask, if we ask for more information than we ask everybody.
And those donor meetings can be anywhere as often as you want, right? I mean, that's.
Well, people have meet and greets and have meet with.
Right, these are out of the, yeah, out of the city.
All right, so I think we have that.
But you, you, you can have, you can have donations from outside of the city.
Outside of county, I, no, but these are, these are meetings.
All right, but now we're getting into, we're making judgments based on where things are, and that's not something that we have code to back us up on.
Well, that's, we just need to be as specific as possible and clear.
But if we're going to do it for this one candidate, Debbie, we got to do it for everybody. So either we stop nitpicking this one.
No, it's just, there's more information to look at. I'm not picking on anybody particularly.
Okay, well.
Some are empty, some are full. The ones that have more information are the ones that have more questions.
Well, and that's.
It's not, I, I don't even care who it, I don't even have to know who the name is.
Well, it's, you know.
Just don't even tell me the name of anybody. I just want to look at their expenses, and if I have questions.
That's fine.
You know, and they're all the same, it's for everybody.
To the last one.
But it's just unusual to be out of state and have all this going on.
Do you want to look at this one, for Savage?
Yes.
All right, and then we have Koonha, who is running for alderman in Ward Eight.
And many out of state. You looked at this, right, where they're coming from?
Looked at it, yes. Um, and there's a math error that needs to be fixed, and on Schedule Five, there's no aggregates. We've kind of forgiven that on some other people. Again, that's just kind of a rookie mistake, or actually, he, he put in zero when it's really those, so we'll ask for an amended report.
It's the most, oh, where is that one again? Makeles.
Which one?
Makeles. Just didn't see what dates were from. All-star, but she's very well-traveled.
Looking at these, so we can double-check that we've got the ones that are getting amended. Have a lot amended.
Thank you for. Was that, was that the last one?
All right, while you're looking at those. So I have amended report for Buckley.
They, sorry, this is from piles.
Kirik. Mended one for Makele. Those shays. Amended on Pindell Charles. Oh, Finlayson. Fred Payone. Arnett.
Sorry, sorry, just to skip, all right, I want to go, Finlayson was before we. Because I think the issue here was the back to school. And there's lots of sponsorships, if that's a sponsorship.
Right, sure, you wanna say so.
I agree with Liam. When you were talking about sponsorship in another candidate, he made a sponsorship to a statue. And you guys said it was okay.
Well, no.
What's, what's the difference between doing that and sponsoring a back school? I'm just asking for clarity.
My question with this particular candidate is that it's a sitting alderwoman. Is this?
She'll use her funds.
But she's not running.
But she could run again in the future.
She could run.
All right, I mean.
And I wasn't okay with that. I brought that up because I wasn't okay with the statue. You know, I brought, I mean, we didn't take a vote on it.
The two of you would like to ask for more clarity on this, on one, your.
I can go either way. I was just raising it that it's, again, because of, I guess, my history, this kind of thing has come up before, so that's why I was raising it. I can go either way.
To, yeah, to me, the, the two, if you wanna ask the question, is this a sponsorship of the event? I think the answer is gonna be yes, and in that case, you would accept it. So if we wanna ask that question, we can. To me, it's a sponsorship and I don't need to ask the question. But if the two of you would like to ask a question, so I think you guys can decide if there's two of you that wanna ask, is that a sponsorship? I think none of us anymore have an issue with the ticket, the community event. But I don't think that this is, this is part. I mean, you can tell me if I'm wrong, if the two of you do, but.
Are you talking about the backpacks or the community event? You're talking about the backpack?
I think, I think we all think that the community event is okay, right? Yes?
Yes.
So now we're talking about the back to school donation.
I would say no. But we could ask for more information.
So if we, do we wanna ask, do we wanna ask, is that a sponsorship? I would say no. If the two of you wanna say, ask for clarification as to whether that's a sponsorship of the event,
I think that's what we've decided, was that we were going to ask, that's what the note here says, we were going to ask for more
Okay.
more information.
So, so let's strike the, yes, you got it.
I mean, I was thinking it meant he was buying backpacks, which, you know, you should do on your own. You know, you could do that yourself without being a, a candidate.
It's, it's, it's a charitable event.
It's a charitable event. She's giving the money for somebody to provide backpacks.
Personal.
No, she's providing, they're providing backpacks probably for kids.
Right, we do that at our church every year.
Okay, so.
And I do that myself. It's a charitable event.
But if she's making a donation in the name of her campaign.
So we'll just ask for more additional information, like, I'm assuming.
Then we're gonna ask for additional clarification as to whether that's
Sure, right.
in the name of her campaign.
Okay, so that's an amended report. Friends of Fred Peon, Madam Singh.
Right, because it all goes down to
Okay, let me, let me go through and finish. It's getting, it's getting confusing. Let me go back and start over again. Amended report on friends of Fred Peon, Finlayson, Pindell Charles, Makele, Creek, Devin Buckley, Ross Arnett, Arma O'Neill, Kenneth Vincent, Alseb Johnson, Deborah Odom, Conti, Brooke Shandelmeyer, Koonha.
Do you wanna recombine?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Teresa, I'm not sure we
Savage.
I anyway got a bit of candidacy. Alseb. Can you? Or I can look and see. I think you sent them out, like, there was 10 that one time. I'll look and see.
Yeah, I definitely got it, so it's, it's in there.
You got that one? Okay, I just didn't print it. I, I printed them all out, but I don't have, I must not done.
Here it is.
So the, these will be online tomorrow? Sure.
You want me to go through the ones that are okay and rejected? Do I need to approve, do we need to approve those? Yes? All right, so the ones.
Do you want me to go through and make a motion?
Sure.
As I go through them?
Yep. That sounds good.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the following campaign finance, campaign fund reports for this first deadline. I think we all know the date. All right. The first one is Gallagher.
Second.
Oh, no, I'm gonna do them all.
Just do them all.
Good, okay.
Cusimano, Dai, Smith Brown, Huntley, the Republican Central Committee, Finlayson. Wait, sorry, scratch that, this got separated. Toes, did I say that right?
Taze.
Taze, sorry. Are we removing Tom Sells?
It doesn't need to be.
So, removing that, that's not, that, not relevant. Grunsberger, Littman, O'Shea, O'Shea? Do you wanna add that?
Sorry.
McDermott. Bramson.
I didn't see Katie.
Democratic Central Committee. Thorpe. And I will make a motion to accept those. We can hold it until you have a chance to look.
No, there wasn't much in there.
Okay. Is there a second on those?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If you want us to do another one for the amended ones, Regina?
I'm gonna make a motion to request amended, make amended campaign finance reports for this reporting period from the following candidates. Finlayson, Peon, Savage, Kuna, Shandelmeyer, Conti, Odom, Alseb Johnson, Vincent, O'Neill, Arnett, Buckley, Creek, Makele, Pindell Charles.
Second.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hopefully, we got everybody.
Nuts.
All right, so we wanted to talk complete stat. We wanted to, next item on the agenda is.
So we're expecting a couple more, right? Three more?
Yes.
And when those, when those come in, how are we gonna look at those?
You can come in the office.
So she'll tell us, we'll be notified?
You'll let us know, Teresa, when the others come in? Yeah. When the other ones come in, the other
Three more.
Three more. So they'll send out notices now?
And then will we, will we approve them at our next meeting?
Well, let's talk about meetings, because that, we can fit that in. We could either, if we have to do a special meeting, we can. If not.
Okay, so motion to create a, a fee, a one day, one day fee for alderman Arnett for one day late.
Yes, the, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's already been created, it's already there. We're going to, what's the word for it? Imply, we're going to.
Oh, well, that one's, the delay is always.
Yeah, it's, it's, we're not creating, creating the fee, it's the, the fees are.
We're imposing the fee.
But we're going to impose.
Imposing, yes, thank you, sorry, impose.
That's the word.
So here, so are we finished with that order of business? Everybody good?
Yes.
So next we're talking about meetings, since we've got a lot of meetings coming up. And Regina gave me a bunch of these things to get out. Go ahead, you know, go explain it, it'd be great.
I got one of these.
Okay. Are they all the same? Oh, there's a difference. Are there two pages or it's just double-sided? Oh. Okay. All right, so you wanna talk us through it?
Mike, okay. Basically, in the schedule, your first date that the board would be required to meet is Tuesday, September the ninth, and that that is for the second, that's the deadline for the second campaign fund report. So you would need to schedule a date to meet for that day to review the report. The next day is September the sixteenth, that's your general election day, that's an all-day meeting. So that's from 5:45 until the close of the poll. So just for your calendar's sake, you have to be at the county 5:45 PM. Because they did requested the board be at the county to answer the hotline. So you, two of you, two of you would have to be there.
I, I thought we talked about that, and we asked if we could be here.
And we can't.
The, the MOU that was provided to us is currently going to be routed around to be signed. The state noted in there that the board shall be answering the help.
Yeah.
And.
So we can rotate. Can, can we go back to, to September ninth real quick?
Yep.
So if we're looking at these amended reports, let's say ideally, they'll be sent out notices on the 25th. The 15 days is business days, not calendar days, correct? I'm not sure.
Yeah, because they couldn't turn in a report on of business days, because you couldn't turn in a report on a weekend. So it would probably have to be business.
Let's check it now.
Think I did it.
So they'll be notified tomorrow?
They're gonna be notified on Monday, because we need to wait for Eileen to consolidate the list of what you request.
For the specific ones.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm just, wanna make sure, so if if it's 15 business days, then they won't be due until after.
The 12th, they'll be due the 12th.
It'll be September the 12th.
So September the 12th would be the date for the amended report?
Right, but that's after their next report.
It's gonna work, that's work.
That's why we're trying to. All right. Let's check if it's calendar days. Then it's sooner. It's calendar days, I think it's the, it's the eighth.
That'd be better.
Then you're gonna meet on the eighth?
Or we could just do it on the ninth?
No, the ninth is the deadline, so you'd have to schedule a meeting after the ninth for the second report. The deadline is at 4:30 on the ninth.
Okay, so we are, we want to schedule a meeting.
You guys could hold on to all of this. You have 15 hours on the 16th to do that.
Right, but then that pushes us back in terms of getting the other reports done.
Just, just going.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would, I would say if it, I mean, we could meet on, if they're due on the ninth, we could meet on the 11th, like it's on here. But then we are like, then we're gonna meet again, like, I, it just doesn't seem like it's worth it to. It doesn't seem like it's worth it to me to meet about the next report when we haven't finished this report and, or the amended reports from these candidates.
Well, if it's, if it's a calendar date, or if it's a business date and they're not coming in until the 12th, we can do them on the 16th.
Okay.
We can do the amended and we can do the campaign, the, the second one, and the second one on the 16th. Now, they're certainly available if you wanna come in and look at them ahead of time and review them, you can do that. But we'll, we'll talk about them on the 16th and and since we have a little bit of a gap before the next time.
Sorry, sorry, let me, we could meet before the 15 days are up and clear out any ones that have come in. Many of these should be relatively quick. And perhaps there will be a pile of some of them if we wanted to meet quickly and clear out the ones that have come in and approve them.
Okay.
Because then they could be posted. I think my concern is that, am I correct to assume that the ones that need to be amended will not be posted publicly?
They all get posted.
They all get posted, even if they need to be.
Right. But the analysis doesn't get.
But this, sorry, this report doesn't get posted until the amended one is.
No.
So it does get posted now and it has like a flag that says, will be amended?
No.
No, it doesn't.
It just gets posted.
It just gets posted.
Yep.
But they don't, but they don't get the analysis. It's not, that doesn't get put up on the website.
Understood. So this original report gets posted. If people have questions or concerns, I mean, like, sorry. There is nothing with the reports that will be amended that says that they will be amended, they just get posted. This is what everyone submitted.
Yep.
Understood. Okay, then I, then I think we should just meet on the 16th and, and do everything on the 16th.
We can always add if we need to, if they start coming in. I mean, if you wanted to do one the week of September 1st. But.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean.
You mean for the three that are late, if they're in?
Well, we should be getting those three and hopefully we'll get some in. So we can always, it's easier to schedule a meeting sometimes and then cancel it then.
That's true. Yeah, so let's, that's, that's a good point. Do, would you like to meet on the 4th in two weeks?
That works for me. That work for you all? Does that work for you, Regina and Teresa? It'll be a special meeting to review.
I think we can, I think we can do virtual and we'll know that if you want to look at it in advance. Well, you don't wanna send out reports via email. That's, that's a red.
It's scanned and, yeah, that's, that's how we got them before.
But I'm saying before they're approved. This time, there was.
No, they send them out so we can approve, so we can look at them.
Sending them out? All right, we can just send them out.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll have a virtual meeting?
On September 4th, at time.
So we don't need to do the 9th, then?
It's the deadline.
Yeah, that's just a deadline, that's not a meeting to review. Do you wanna make it 7, or earlier?
Yeah, I wanna be, try to be respectful of their working hours. Can we meet in the morning? You guys wanna meet at 9:00 AM?
That's okay with me.
If they're in the mornings, well, just, maybe, that doesn't work, but will work.
Yeah, you, you let us know.
I'd rather do midday, or-
Okay.
Afternoon or evening, but-
Sure.
I can, if I don't have to be, if I don't have to dress.
Can we do noon?
Yep.
That work for you all? Right.
I yelled it, I'm gonna, I have to verify that date with the COATV, just to make sure that they can accommodate to meet.
Meeting have their, they do theirs the 3rd, never mind.
But I will definitely-
Alright, so it's tentative.
And I will do that, too.
Okay, so tentatively, the noon on the 4th.
Yes. Well, we, we'll, we'll, yeah, we'll be reviewing any three that have been, I mean, we can't assume they're gonna be in, but we'll be reviewing any initial reports that are submitted, and any amended reports that are submitted.
Sounds like a plan.
Alright.
And then the next time we meet will be on election day?
That'll be an election day.
Okay.
And we can do additional reports then?
Yeah. Yes. We're beginning the canvas.
Right. Did you find out if we could do it virtually, or do we have to come in?
I, I feel like we can all, I mean, I'm fine coming, you guys would prefer to do it, I'm fine coming into City Hall and doing it together, but if you guys-
Is there a certain time we have to do it by?
I think it says the next business day, but I feel like I would prefer to do that in the morning to just-
So this is the day after election, so we have to come in to our oath?
Well, we'll be, can, I mean, we're not gonna get home till, you know, late, we can't do it that night.
Alright.
We have to wait till the next day.
Okay.
Right, so 10 o'clock, noon?
10, 10 is not, is not a time that works for me.
Okay, so what works for you?
Noon, maybe, because, I mean, I probably won't row that morning, because that's from-
Yes, noon, let's do noon.
Noon? By noon.
And, and I think, sorry to take a step back, the primary election day, we can coordinate, two of us being there the entire day.
Well, the best way to, I mean, ideally, all of us are there.
Yes, and I think for a period, we all wanna be there to review the-
And then we can rotate.
Okay.
That's generally what's, again, we can always do things differently, but generally, you can divvy up and rotate, just, you know, really, the only thing to do is to just come in and thank the election judges and do that, if there's an issue, they're gonna call with an issue.
Okay.
And the election judges, the chief judges will take care of any, they're the first force of action if there's an issue.
Okay.
I mean, we won't see any judges till 9 or 10 o'clock at night.
Well, if you're going to this election sites, I mean, the only thi, and the only other thing for us to be doing if we're not in Glen Burnie is visiting polling places.
Oh, I thought, so I thought we were supposed to be in Glen Burnie from 6:00 AM to 10:00.
At least two of us have to be there, but the third one will be rotating or look, checking the polls, unfortunately, we can't go home.
I know, I'll, because that's, that's a lot, that's too far to go back and forth. Right, to go there and then come back and do polls, and then go there again, right?
I mean, you're gonna do it once during the day, believe me, you're gonna wanna break.
Yeah, I don't mind staying here and doing polls.
Well, it's, it's not staying here and doing polls, it's, it's usually just going and checking in, have you got everything you need, whatever, so there's eight polling places, so we'll all take turns.
Why, why don't you start that first in the morning, and then we can take turns later, and you and I can be at the-
I think it's best that we all be there at the very beginning, I think that's important, that we're all there, and, because there's gonna be kind of a, Regina.
I'm sorry, basically, if you're all at the county, while the judges are setting up, you'll know when all the polls are open, and then-
Right. And that's when problems-
They, sometimes if they have any technical difficulties during the opening, you'll be aware, cuz we would have to call you to tell you, or they would let you know.
Right.
Okay, I was just trying to save Debbie the trip back and forth, so Debbie, it sounds like if you don't wanna make the trip back and forth-
You're gonna make the trip in 20 minutes at 5:30 in the morning.
I, okay.
But you can, you, you can also stay, she can stay at the county all day.
No, I won't.
You can just stay at the county all day, it's fine, alright.
You can do that.
Moving on.
Yeah, because, yes, you only need two there, but if, it, it might need three to make a decision, so.
I need two.
But if somebody says yes, and somebody says no, okay, well, I'd prefer, as the chair, I'd really like us all to be there, I think it's important, especially, cuz neither one of you have gone through it before.
Okay, then we don't have to, we don't have to go to the polling locations at all.
It's up to you, if you wanna go-
Exact.
I like to go, because I like to thank the election judges, I like to talk to people, and I think it's good for us to be out there showing our faces, so, but there's only eight polling places, so it's not, you know.
Got it, alright.
Right. Okay, so, where are we, Regina, September 17th, we've got that, we're gonna meet at noon? Okay.
That sounds like a great plan.
Now, that's fine. Right, okay, we can do that.
That sounds like a good plan.
So, what else are those other dates that we need to go up to Glen Burnie to approve anything or review? We have something before the primary.
The only thing you have to go to, to the county for is the LNA, the logic and accuracy testing, it's the last thing on the second page, and that date is August the 26th. We, but we're not sure of the time, cuz you have to certify the machine, and the board does have to be there on August 20th to certify it.
But only two of us have to be there.
Only two of. And that's the only date that I'm aware of, that you have to go up there, that's not, you know, just happening before the primary election. So we're gonna create an agenda for that.
That usually takes, what, an hour?
Yeah, cuz they do most of it, and then they walk you through one machine, and then the teams do the mall, it doesn't-
No, but it's interesting, and also, they'll go through, um, they'll go through all of the equipment that's sent out, they'll do a random, a random check, and then, is that the same day that we'll do the poll books? And then they synchronize the poll books? Okay, did you need me to hand these out, too, Regina?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, this is just for, this is just for information.
Yes, correct.
So the ballot, the ballot is posted now, or not posted yet?
The sample, yeah.
The sample is, was posted this week? Okay. Is it down now, is today, or tomorrow's the last day that needs to be posted, that five days?
Tomorrow. Tomorrow.
Five days through tomorrow.
And we've had a lot of responses, no one had an issue with this printing of their name.
Yay!
And if you didn't, it recognized that the drop boxes are outside, did you see the one in front of City Hall across the street? They're out, and they're sealed, they will be opened on the 20th. Yep, and all of the City of Annapolis magnetized labels are on the, on the machine, and the one at Mount Olive, the only site that has to have a camera on a rolling platform, because it did-
That come from the police department?
Yeah, it came from the police department, and it is up, and it is work. We actually gotta wave. Everything's going forward.
Great, alright, so any other discussion, any other business? I'm gonna keep these. Nope. Anything else? I know it was a long night, thank you, everybody.
It would've been much longer. That was so good that you changed that, I was concerned.
Alright.
Yeah, Teresa made one thing, you guys need to move, make a motion to have your September 4th meeting virtual at 12 o'clock, and then you need to-
For canvas? Is it the canvas?
The 16th through the 17th.
Well, well, okay, and then you can approve your meeting canvas date, we'll print, that's gonna be your in-person meeting at the county, and then you need your primary election LNA date, so we can print it.
Alright, but we don't have the time for that yet.
Yeah, we, well, we can put TBD until we get the time from the county, cuz they need to-
Okay.
So you need a motion? Motion? I move that the next meeting of the Board of Elections is Thursday, September 4th at noon. Following that will be the 16th all-day meeting up at Headquarters in Glen Burnie. Following that will be the certification of the canvas at noon on Wednesday, September 17th. Right?
Not the certification, the start.
Or announcing the canvas. Yes, noon at, on the 17th. And then in addition, there will be a meeting at County Election Headquarters to do the system logic and accuracy testing on August 26th, time to be determined.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved, good job.
And the one in person on the 26th? I think, I think I'll probably let you do the 26th.
Oh, so Wednesday at noon at City Hall, the oath of office is virtual?
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
So we're not meeting at noon?
Nope. If we're meeting at noon.
Okay.
Alright, so virtual on the 4th, virtual on-
At noon, is that what you're saying?
The 17th. 17th.
Yes, and then we, we have to address what was the ranked choice voting that was addressed to us, do you wanna do that on the 4th when we meet?
No.
Virtually?
We don't have an agenda for that. But, but, let's just stay focused on this, I don't know until-
Okay.
There's more information coming in, so.
Okey dokey.
Alright. It may just end up being just at our regular meeting.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't wanna put a date yet, because there's still more information to get.
No.
As far as other committees and everything happening, where it's moving.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Alright.
So will we have a September, we don't have a September 18th meeting?
We have one, the regular schedule, but it may, we may not.
After we're doing the 16th, then.
We'll wait and see if there's business or not.
Right.
I mean, we do have to meet at some point about ranked choice voting, I just don't know when that's gonna be.
Alright, I'm gonna move to at 9:24, end the meeting, close the meeting.
Adjourn.
Adjourn. I'm gonna move that we adjourn at 9:24, yeah.
Okay, but, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I need to get out of here.